All right, we'll call it out. Budget meeting to order. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. These are your enterprise funds tonight. As you'll recall, your enterprise funds are your business-like funds where you look to recover the cost of service by the fees that are associated with that service. So typically, you typically don't use general fund tax dollars in enterprise funds. Previously, there has been in the solid waste fund, general tax dollars used to subsidize that, and in the recommended budget this year, we moved that out, out of the general fund, and we'll get into that in a minute, but we pulled that out and moved that a self-sustaining fund. So the first one we'll look at is the water fund, and of course, both of these are Christina's. She's here. I guess the big, the big picture on this is, of course, you are remembering the debt service. The debt service ramps up from fifteen to eighteen, substantially bumps up, and then levels off. So there was a staged or a planned increase in rates to ramp up for that so you could handle that debt service. You'll see the, you'll see the revenue side. If you look over on page 149, you'll see all the different financial information regarding the debt service payments and the rate increases to adjust to handle those, that new debt service, or that increasing debt service. So this is the year where last year you did a three percent, this year would be a three percent, and then next year would be the final three percent that was programmed in to get you to where you could, to manage those debt service. I'm not sure what kind of questions there are. Christina's got her laptop open and answer anything you want.
Seven different budgets. When you're asking questions, because the way to manage this is you have to combine, because salaries, it's difficult to manage salaries, or manage treatment, or chemicals, or that type of thing per district. So we actually have to take all seven budgets and then combine them per line item, and that's how it's managed throughout the year. But per the way that the districts are set up, you actually will see seven different budgets, one for each district. And the way we've allocated that is based upon the number of customers. Eleven percent, sixteen percent, so that's how the expenses are divided among the seven different budgets.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask, on the, on the debt service, when you look at the increase in 2016, that number's 208,000, and then the next year's 333. Does the 333 include the previous?
No, sorry. If you actually look at the column directly beside that, in 2015, we paid a total debt service of 1.7.
Okay.
In 2016, 1.9, and then in 2017, we did 2.2.
I got you.
So we, based upon, you know, decisions made previously, that's why the three, the three percent increase is going to be in place so that we can help cover that. Also, each year, there's also been a certain amount that you actually see a line item in the budget where we have money set aside to go to fund balance. Because as you can see, the four, the $454,000, a three percent increase is not going to generate that much income. But that's why we lay that out in just past.
How long does the debt go? It's 2020, I know it's not the last year, is it?
No, sir, it's not. It's a, yes, Anita, go look that up.
But it, what does it do after 2020? Flatten out?
Yes, sir.
Does it decrease any?
Well, as you see, in 2019, it gets ended. It doesn't.
The increase is, is very small.
It starts to decrease.
But I guess, I was asking, like, I think one of the school bonds is actually paid off next year. Anita, it's either next year or the year after.
The year after.
Year after, which we were paying, I think, you know, it's, in that amount that we were paying on that school bond has actually gone down. It was at 565,000. Now, I think the last year will be like 400, and so about, down about $100,000. I'm wondering, in the future, if these things go down, does it give us an opportunity to maybe adjust rates?
The maturity date of one, let's see, I have those right here. The refunding, the maturity date, District One is 2022.
Well, that's not too.
District Two is 2034.
Oh, whoa. That goes out there.
District Three is 2036.
A year.
District Four is 2039. District Six, 2035. District Seven, 2038.
They do flatten out. You don't know whether they go down or not.
No, sir, I have not looked at it.
Jesus, boy.
I'm glad they flatten out, anyway.
Yes, sir, definitely not continually increasing 200, 300,000.
Do you have the number of customers for each one of the districts plus by, or the percentage of the one that you use to allocate the costs? And do it slow, because I'm going to have to turn the page to write it at the top.
District Two is 15.82.
Oh, excuse me, 15 what?
82, 0.82. District Three is 16.39. District Four is 17.62. District Five is 6.93. District Six is 20.99. And District Seven is 10.67.
You may, you may not be able to answer this question, and I'm going to ask it anyway. I'm, I'm on the Hyde County water system. Is, is there any way, or is, is there a year out there where that's going to convert back over to Beaufort County, or you got any background on that?
The background that I have on that is that Hyde County was, had funds available at that time where they were extending service, and they were able to do that into Beaufort County. And generally, when that happens for a neighboring water system or neighboring county, they would ask permission from the county.
Right.
And then that would be granted. We have that in Hyde County. There's also a section in southern, western Beaufort County where eastern Pines Water leaks around, makes a small section there. And that's something that's happened throughout the years in other, familiar with other systems where that's the case. So I don't think, there are no plans for us to assume those customers, because they have funds and they receive funds based upon that customer account.
Any other questions? Okay.
So your next enterprise fund, your solid waste fund, this is one where we had discussed that the recommendation of the budget is to pull that out of general fund and make it its own enterprise fund. The numbers for that, you'll see, are easily explained on 161. And you'll see in 1415, the solid waste fees that are generated off the $90 fee are 1.97 million, and the expenses are right at 3 million. So you were subsidizing that to the tune of $933,000 in general fund taxes. In 1516, that number changed a little bit, and you'll see you are subsidizing a little over a million dollars. In the recommended budget, 1617, we took the solid waste fees and looked at what it would take to make that a freestanding, self-supporting fund, and it was a $50 increase to 140, and that essentially gives you a, a self-sustaining fund where you're banking $15,000 out of that. I mean, it's, when you have, I think we got an estimate of 21,000 customers or so is the number that's, that's roughly in there. And so when you, if you, you had to get down to the penny to get it to actually match up, so you're going to have a little bit over, a little bit under, but, but, but that was at 140. It brought in a surplus of $15,000 on a 3 million budget, so. But that was the goal, to do that, to try to move that out and not subsidize it. Like I say, there were a couple of things. That was one, the EMS piece out in Old Ford where you were subsidizing the general taxes. So we, we decided that that was a, if you were used, if that's what the tax is for, we ought to make sure it's covering the entire amount. So same with the solid waste. You are in a new contract with Republic, and those rates were frozen for the next five years, is that right, Christina? Next five years? So we have a really good, you know, we know, we have got, we've got a good estimate on what those will be, because the rates are frozen. And, and our goal is that the tonnage goes down, because part of that new contract was that they would help us with the recycling piece, to try to drive more, pull more out of the waste stream into the recycling stream, so that we could drive those numbers down because of the tonnage we have to pay for. So the more we can pull out of the, the general waste stream, it helps us.
I got it. One question. We're going to add a $50 fee on what we got now making it $140, is that a month?
A year.
That's yearly. It's put on, it's put on the tax bill.
Right. Okay, is that, is that fee, as the, as the enterprise fund works, works through the process, will we ever be able to lower that fee?
You would, I mean, it depends upon what the, it depends upon what the waste stream does. I mean, it's all about each year, looking at that to determine.
Whether we need that much or not.
And, and part of that, I mean, what you may also look at is, you may look at that and say, well, we want to stay at that, and your, if your tonnage goes down, then your expenses go down, and you may be able to build a little fund balance. And if you can do that, then you might designate some of that and say, okay, now we're going to fix this convenience site, we're going to use that for capital to fix this convenience site, or we're going to locate another convenience site, maybe, if that's the goal of the board. But you would look at it every year and make that determination, just like a regular business fund.
Got you. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Brian, what's driving the cost 1617? It's up considerably.
That, that's it, the, that's the additional, that's the additional $50 on the fee, is that what you mean?
No, no. I mean, last year, 1617, 19, this year is, is 2.9 million. Is that, is that the one, is that the difference in the 90,000 and 140?
Yes, sir. That's, that's the additional $50 in there. Yes, sir. And I know there's, you mentioned the other day, some of the things that we probably want to try to look at over the next year, and this will be, I mean, obviously, the board's got to decide how you want to approach that, the use of the convenience sites by folks who are out of the county. I mean, it, it happens, it happens all over the state. Folks who are closer to our convenience sites are going to come over and use that, and every bit of the tonnage that comes from out of the county, you're still paying for. There's an enforcement issue that you run into, is how do you enforce that? I mean, you know, there are some places put a sticker on your car, but then you may not be driving that same car, and then everybody gets fussing about it. But, but there is some spillover there, and I don't know to the extent, we'd have to figure out a way to, to try to figure what that, what that overage was, but.
Well, I, I brought it up because every time I go to the dump site, I see somebody that I know from another county or somewhere else. I mean, and I just brought that up. I don't know whether it's worth, I take Jerry's thing, I don't know whether the juice is worth the squeeze or not. But, but, but if you, you can save $10,000 a month, and from Pitt and Washington and Craven as much, Pamlico, those are real dollars in a year's time, but I don't know whether it's that much or not.
And I'll tell you what, what I'm thinking, and it will, it will take some effort on the part of the state, and that is, when, when you get tags and you get those stickers, the question is, how much would it cost the legislator to mandate that you simply have the county on the license tag?
Right.
I mean, that's, to me, that's the simplest fix, because wherever your vehicle's registered at, that's the county that's going to show up on the tag.
That's right.
Except for your.
Commercial.
No. Vacation, weekend homes underwater. We have a lot of people that use the one down Hawkins Beach Road and also Claybottom School Road, as they are headed back west away from their weekend home.
That's right.
Pack their trash and take their trash with them as they leave. Because we've had, the site attendants will ask people if they see, like, you know, Raleigh stickers or something, and they'll ask them where they're from, and they were like, well, I live in Raleigh, but I'm leaving my home on the river. And I've received phone calls from people where they say, you know, I pay the tax, but your site attendant wouldn't allow me to dump my trash on the weekend.
I think what you do, Ed, is what I do at the one on Beach Ridge, when I see somebody that I know personally from Hyde County, I just try to embarrass them. I just say, you need to send us a check. But I wouldn't say that to anybody that I didn't know.
You right again.
And I think, I think the other problem you've got is that most of these, they've got one person there.
Yeah.
And I can tell you, my experience with that person, is they're not going to get any kind of enforcement deal, so.
No.
I think it's a.
Well, like I said, it might not be worth doing anything, but it's, to me, every time I go out there, I see somebody from, especially sometimes, I see them at different sites, and it's not fair to the people here to pay for somebody from.
Pitt County.
Pitt County, Washington County. I'm not picking on any one county.
If you, if you, if you want to get somebody inside, you just go to a landfill pulling a trailer with a lot of stuff on it, and you tie it up for about 30 minutes, and everybody out there waiting, they'll turn you in.
It might not be worth, it might not be worth, I mean, but I don't know how to handle it. I mean, let's just move on, because frankly, God knows, I ain't going to tell nobody to send me no check.
These are people I know.
Yeah, I got you.
Commissioner, it's my preference, I want to hear what you got to say.
That'd be a smart answer, but just put a scanner in, scan the tags, and send them a ticket.
Just like they do up in Raleigh on that new 540.
Yeah, just scan the tags and send them a ticket.
Them people in Beaufort County are mean.
But I mean, if somebody's tailing them in Raleigh, or so, I mean, you'll have them in your stand systems, so they won't get a ticket if they're from somewhere.
In the expansion budget, I notice that you've got like $30,000 in there to clean up or to improve one.
Yes, sir.
So what you're saying is, is that if this, if this is true, we've got about $15,000 that can offset.
Yeah.
Some of the capital.
Yes, sir, and you'll see that the expenses, the actual increases this year, so there's for the expansion, they're based on that. The continuation budget is actually less than last year's total budget.
Well, the improvements that I've seen at the one at Beach Ridge, since we signed this last contract, it's improved quite a bit, and even the employees have a little better attitude, so hopefully that'll last for the length of the contract.
Yes, sir.
You said, Mr. Waters, you said that something about the employees down there weren't going to get in any type of enforcement. Well, I'll tell you, the guys on Magnolia School Road, you pull in there, and they don't think you're, you're, you're good, they'll say, you can't dump here. So they do enforce what they've been told to enforce. Like, no commercial trucks can go in there and just, and just dump.
Right. And since the site, the site attendants have a very difficult job, because they're in the public, and they have been tasked to enforce rules that the public may not always be exactly aware of it, especially not on a Saturday afternoon, after they've been working outside in the hot sun all day, and they're trying to finish up and hurry up and get home, and then somebody tells them that they can't dump, and they have to keep it on the trailer until Monday. So the site attendants are, they have to deal with a really difficult situation.
And they do a good job. I mean, I, sometimes when I go out there, they have told me to go back. I said, why? I mean, like, they won't take plastic bags and stuff, and this is where y'all made the rules, and I'm going to enforce them. But the problem is, it's not all of them, like the one you were talking about, it's those that really borders other counties, and the people are true. It's closer to coming hours than it is to, probably, I use Beach Ridge or.
Well, that Beach Ridge catches all the traffic. It's a shortcut for people coming out of Hyde County.
Yeah, and same thing on, like, on the west side of town, it's 32, it's probably the same.
In Patco was probably.
Probably.
Well, the good thing about it is it works both ways, because I'm going to Fairfield in the morning in Hyde County, so I'll take some.
Well, well, I'm going to be there until you send me a check.
But also, I think Republic has done a good job in, in some of the, some of the new signage that they put up to help people, to direct people to the right containers, because, you know, last year before, it was, you'd pull up and you'd have to ask or say, I'm not really sure where this goes, or you start throwing something somewhere, and they say, whoa, whoa, whoa. So they've, they've done a really good job of getting signage out, so that you know this goes here. I mean, it helps them, but it also helps us to make sure it goes in the right place.
Anything further?
Not me.
Okay. Into expansion. Are you going to wait for expansion?
Expansions are set up for next week. The agencies will be here to talk about those. This pretty much was kind of an opportunity maybe for y'all to talk about where you are, how y'all want to handle it.
Mr. Chairman?
I didn't realize we were going to go this fast. I was thinking we were going to be over a little bit.
Christina has, she, she might want to go ahead and do hers, the expansion part, and that way she wouldn't have to come back next week.
Maybe she's not ready to do it.
Well, give her a vouch.
Mr. Smith, what is, what is your?
I'll defer to the county manager on that, if he's.
That's up to you. I mean, they're in there.
Yeah, they're here.
They're here.
They're not going to change until next week, so if we want.
Okay. Come on. We're doing.
What pages are?
Are you, are you saying, based on where we're at, that's on the budget, that there's, it's a waste of your time?
Oh, me? No, no, sir. I'm not saying that at all.
On page 347 is where it starts for the enterprise funds. And there are, well, that's where it's on the water fund, it says separate fund, solid waste, the proposed solid waste fund. So 347, there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, service expansion requests, and Christina can go through those. I mean, we can hit the, we can hit the top one for, in the, both in the general fund budget and then in the enterprise fund budget for water, we showed a service expansion for a 2% COLA that breaks out across the general on one and water on the other, and then also the employee assistance program that, that is in the expansion proposal, that breaks across the number of employees in the general fund. So if you look on the general fund and service expansion, you'll see the same thing there, it'll be a higher number, because it covers all the employees that are under the general fund. This only covers the 27 full-time and one-part-time employee on the, in the water fund, so those are consistent between both, and then Christina can talk to you about the rest of them. Or if you have any questions about the first two, I'll be glad to answer them.
Concerning your, your whole list period, this is pretty much going to come from your fund anyway, isn't it?
Yes, sir. It's an enterprise fund, everything comes from the, from our fund. It's not part of the general fund budget.
Okay.
When you say expansion like this, Mr. Chairman, does, do you have the funds to take care of these expansions, or, or would you be asking us for any money anywhere on this list?
Well, kind of to answer that for you, the, there is some money. Now, it, it depends, and when you look at, let's go back to page 145. If you go back to page 145, you'll see that there is a fund balance available in the water districts. There's a fund balance reserve of $572,000. Now, like Christina said earlier, that fund balance is being set aside to anticipate those, to keep those rate increases down on, as the debt service goes up. So there is some there. I don't know that we, I don't know that we have a great handle on, on that, on that model yet for the percent changes and what it does in year, in out years. That's one of the things we've got to do. We've got to get a good model together so we can see that. I mean, there is some there in that. If that's what you would want to do, we would need to better understand what it would, what the impact would be in the out years.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, the question I'm asking is, how mu, how much money do you want, is she asking for from us that she doesn't have in her thing? That's, that's what we need to know.
Well, from, from the service expansion side, what we're saying is, this is something additional than what you're doing right now. When we present the continuation to you, we're saying, what you're doing right now is what we're funding next year for you. Anything different, you got to come back and individually say, yes, we want to do that, no, we don't want to do that. Now, like I say, there is some money there available, but what we're asking you to tell us is, if you like that, and that's what you want us to do, then we'll do it. But if you don't, then we won't. I mean, any.
You're not, it's not working for me.
You know, I'm.
What I'm asking for is.
She got some money.
How much you, how about, how about you going to take out of my pocket at the general fund out of this, and how much you?
None out of the general fund for this.
Okay. So I guess the question is, how much you think you can spend of that 572,000 here? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
That's not a decision I think I'm going to help you make, because I don't know enough about the water fund to tell you how much you can spend of your balance. I think that's something you and Christina need to get together and decide and present to us, say, if you got, what you got, how many, how many thousands of dollars request you got here? 840?
Eight seventeen.
Eight seventeen, okay. I was looking down at the bottom. Anyway, I'm saying, of the 840, I think y'all need to come back and say to us as a board, from our fund balance, we think we can afford to designate this much toward that $840, $840,000, $817,000. I'll get it right in a second. And then we decide from that, because I, I don't know about enough about the water fund to know which of these is critical and which is not, that she thinks is critical, and if you think some of them are critical. But I know you want to save some of your fund balance, too, don't you?
Well, I, I think that, I guess, again, like I say, we don't have a good model yet on, on what that looks in the out years.
Well, if you don't have a good model, you don't think I do.
Well, but what I'm saying is this, and, and that's why we said it up front. What I'm saying is, with that fund balance, if you chose and you said, yes, we need to do that, you could do it. Now, what it may end up doing is, once we get into it, it may mean, instead of a 3%, it may be a 4% in the out years, or it may be, instead of leveling out flat at 2, you may go to a half. I mean, you could fund every bit of it, and we would, we would work it out in the out years with, by, by rate increases.
And you, and you said that, that fund balance was 5, 5, 5, 8?
572.
572, right now.
572.
572.
If you'll look on page 145, where it says fund balance reserve down at the very bottom, it's the third line up from the very bottom.
So.
But that's what's transferred to the fund balance out of this year. You're asking, what's the total balance of the fund balance?
Right.
And that's what we need to.
Why are you looking at that? Answer this for me. What's in here that you can put off? I mean, they'll help me make a decision. I mean, is there anything in here that's a dire need?
The items that are listed is the continuation, is the way it's formatted, you'll see, one that's listed is the senior distribution mechanic. That's something that we've spoken about the past couple of years, adding additional, additional staff person, this person would be focused on hydrants, valve exercising program, flushing, that type. This person would be focused on, um, hydrants, valve exercising program, flushing, that type of thing. It's tied into actually the 1, 2, 3, 4, the fifth item listed here, which is the development of a hydraulic model. That's something that we've also been discussing for the previous years. We've completed what I would call phase one of that over the past two budget years, where we have, uh, GIS located our valves, our hydrants, and our structures. That's the first step in developing a hydraulic model. We've spent that, um, money with the engineering firm. So now the next step is to fund this hydraulic model. What they will do is they will take the information that they've obtained, its survey, grade, uh, GPS location. They would put that in a computer model and then we would have the resources to, um, to exactly know how the system is operating. This system was built through multiple phases, through different grant cycles, and there is not a, uh, computerized hydraulic model of our system.
Is that the whole system?
It, it would be for the whole system. We do not have that, and that is extremely unusual for a system of this size, um, to do. And it's actually something that the state is looking at requiring in the future. So it's something that, that needs to be done for the operation of the system. And it's, it's just something that needs to be done to, for good management of the system. What that would allow us to do is if a tank, if for some reason we were to have an issue with a tank, you can go in and you can, um, put that into the, the model and it will tell you your pressures. It will allow us to better control water quality. It'll help us to age our water, to, to see the age of the water in different places in the system.
Well, that project we just finished, that, that has been done on that project, hasn't it?
Yes, sir. That has been completed.
I know, I heard.
So one of the reasons why our, our continuation budget is less than, less, is a lesser value than last year's total.
I got you. I got you.
Because we've completed that project with Withers and Ravenel. So you'll see this, where the $150,000 would be the next phase, which would be development of that hydraulic model.
And something else, I, I'll keep looking. I know, I know, a couple of years back, we put on a schedule, correct me, guys, if I'm wrong, of, of painting, uh, uh, certain water towers at certain times. Is that in this, or is that in the past?
It's a continuation budget.
Okay. I didn't see it.
It's a continuation budget, uh, because of, of looking at that and what we've been looking at, um, we have tanks that need attention and more of a maintenance contract. And that's something that I'll be coming to the board with in a few months to, to see.
I didn't see it in there. It was two years ago.
Well, basically, what I, what I'm seeing in, in your expansion, uh, 1, 2, 3, 4, the top five is, is something that, that you can easily handle. That is not a problem. Your problem is, is talking about the emergency power and that being generators. And so, and what I'm seeing here, you say year one of three. So what you're saying is, for three years, it'll be that, that, that dollar amount of $600,000?
Six hundred the first year, 500 the second year, and 400 the third year. And that's based upon engineering estimates that I've got thus far. And that's something that we're looking at with the grant applications that they're currently going after. You know, my hope is that if we are able to receive some of those grant funds or loan funds, that we would be able to, to use that in lieu of using, uh, funds from our capital reserve.
So for, for, for the upcoming fiscal year, you've already applied for grants or, and/or loans?
We are currently in the cycle, but the, um, the funds for emergency power, they're just not there. They were about 10 years ago, and unfortunately, Beaufort County was unable, did not receive those funds. And that's, you know, you, funding cycles go through different hot topics and hot projects that are awarded. And fortunately, emergency power, most people assume everyone has emergency power at this point. If you build a new treatment plant now, it must have emergency power. And that's, we do not, so that's something that, that we're trying to... You know, if we were awarded grant funds, then we wouldn't have to spend our money. We would be allowed to use a grant fund.
So do, do, I'm gonna get back to your question this first. Is this for one generator?
No.
No.
It's for...
It's not. And if you have additional information, if you'll see on page 354, the $600,000 would be permanent generators and automatic transfer switches at the south side water treatment plant and the wells, and two wells on the south side. And it would, so that would allow the south side water treatment plant to be up and running. And so that's the, um, one of the larger generators that would be required for it to actually run the entire south side plant. Running the south side plant in two wells, we would be able to provide water to the south side of the river. Also, it provides the electrical infrastructure work at the Washington Water Treatment Plant. Uh, that's the pumps that are located just adjacent to the Washington Treatment Plant across the... Depending upon how the bids come in, it would depend on how much we would be able to get done. But at least I was trying to get the automatic transfer switch installed so that, you know, next year we would be purchasing generators. And the prices of generators, it's, you can purchase new. Sometimes you can find things available on, uh, federal government surplus. It really depends on what's available at the time. It's kind of, sometimes there are really, um, good generators that are the right size with a low number of hours that are available for purchase through the federal surplus program. Other times, there's not. So it, it's one of those things until you really start, you have the money appropriated and you start shopping for it, you don't really know what you're gonna get. You know, my hope is that this number would be less, but we always have the budget.
So just, at the end of the day, your goal is to have emergency power at, at every pumping station that we have.
What's currently set out is a three-year plan. We could change that to a four-year plan, to a five-year plan. Do you give me direction on how you want me to proceed? This was based upon, you know, information I'd received previously, so...
But year, year before last taught us a valuable lesson?
That was over three years ago.
Three years, okay.
That was before I was here, so I really don't want that to occur again. But yes, sir, when the south side was without water, it was very detrimental to everyone.
Well, you know, that's just a part of our infrastructure in Beaufort County that we're responsible for. And people can do without a lot of things, but people cannot do without water. And I think this is one of, a very important part of this project.
The, the only comment that I would make is that if you look at the 3% increase in the rates, it's only gonna generate 131,000. So if you've got $500,000 in a reserve, you can do the math real quick.
It's gonna ease you up.
With this new debt service rolling in here for the next three years, the increase, I personally don't think that we should dip into that unless it's an emergency. That's not on...
But they haven't given us the numbers yet.
Yeah, but, but a 3% increase in the rates is the number. That, that's only 131,000.
Not talking about the actual number for fund balance they haven't given to us yet.
We can give you what our estimated number is right now. At the end of this fiscal year, it'll be 5.2 million.
5.2.
So that's about 70, 79, almost 8% revenues to expenditures.
That sounds a little better.
But what we've not done yet, we've not gone through, through the exercise to see how that escalating debt affects that number in the next several years.
Well, let, let me ask you this.
I just don't have that.
Exactly your due tos, to the general fund.
That, that particular exercise that you need to do, how long would it take you to do that exercise?
I, I mean, I should be able to have it next week.
Okay. We can, we can pretty much wait until we... I, I, I'm confused. I thought I heard earlier that our reserve in the, uh, enterprise was 500,000.
That's what's going into the reserve estimated next year, based on the...
So you actually got...
That's what I was saying.
What you're saying is that is one year's revenue that's gonna go into the, uh, savings.
That's the contribution that goes into it. And, and right now, what we're estimating at the end of this fiscal year, we've got about 5.2 million.
5.2?
Right. But what we aren't able to tell you right yet until we put a model together is, how does the debt that runs out, the, you know, 42, you know, how does that impact this? And what do the long-term rate numbers look like? Nobody's got that model. We've just gotta create it.
So do, do you need, uh, that, that you can have it Monday or Tuesday or... I mean, I, I mean, I, I see...
Wednesday expansion, would you, Tuesday?
Uh, enterprise funds expansions were on Tuesday.
Tuesday. I'm on Tuesday, if that's okay.
Okay. All right. Cause that, that's, that's really what we'll, that's what we need to know.
That sounds good. I'm, I'm excited that we've got 5.2 million.
They have been building fund balances over the last several years in anticipation of the bond debt increasing.
Plus we refinanced them too now, didn't we?
We did refinance, yes.
And I'm telling you, it kinda bothers me, cause I, I, ever since I've been here, we've been raising water rates and raising water rates, and here we go with 5.2 million dollars in the bank.
It's needed, though. Because our funds, our chemicals...
I understand.
...they've been raised.
But what's gonna happen, what's gonna happen is that, 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 that money's there to take care of this future debt out, out years. So you get a level instead of going 20% increase in rates.
I just re, laying over and told the chairman, I'm, I'm gonna rely on the water fund committee. But I, man, y'all, y'all sell me a bill of bad goods, I'm gonna talk about you like, "Good."
No, but that's, but, because the, the bonds were refinanced, or it's 2012, so it's 2016. So that's why the fund balance has been being built since then.
I got you. Let me ask you something else while we're on this, uh, last year, year before, help me, guys. We, we done a, a, a relaxing tap fees, because we had so many lines going by houses and nobody was tapping on to them. Did we get any revenue from that? Can anybody tell us?
That was pretty much done at cost.
We gained customers from that.
We gained customers.
But we, right, but we've lost money on the tap fees. We continue to lose money on our tap fees.
See, that's one of the things that we could talk about is, because basically your neighboring counties, the only, probably the only people in eastern North Carolina that has a $500 tap fee is Beaufort County.
Absolutely.
I think everybody else has 1,500 or, or something like that. We're the ones who, who give the discounted tap fees.
Yes. Our tap fees are much lower. All of our fees are lower. That's one of the things, um, that we hope to do is a rate study and a, and a fee study this year. When I've been speaking about revising the rules and regulations, because those fees are set in our rules and regulations.
What's Pitt County?
I think Pitt County's 1,500, isn't it?
It, they're different nonprofits. In Pitt County, you have Eastern Pines.
It's not 1,500.
Then you have the municipalities, but they range from 1,000 to 1,500. There's some with 2,000 for a tap fee.
But I like the fees being low because it increases participation. And I, and I think, I think that's what we want. Is, and we're a tier-one county. Our, our people are poor. And, and the more that we can do for them to get them on the clean water line, the more I think we should do. I mean, and, and the $500 as a tap fee doesn't, doesn't bother me, because I, I want our, our citizens to be able to have clean drinking water, uh, that they can, uh, that they're sure about. And, and that's, I think that's important.
I agree with that, but when you have low fees and you have higher rates. Because we, you know, now we have Highway 17, that's a four-lane divided highway with turn lanes. And so if we have our water line on one side of the road and we have to bore beneath that, $500 doesn't come close to covering that cost.
We just wasn't thinking, we designed that system, were we?
Which system?
That we got to bore on the two lanes of traffic.
No, sir. We have a very, uh, our system, to be a county our size, and to be a tier-one county, we actually, Beaufort County's in very good shape. We have a lot of water lines down roads, you know, out in District 5, District 7, that if it had not been for the assistance of USDA assisting the rural areas like they did, I mean, people would never be able to be on public water. And there's no doubt it's a, um, huge advantage. It increases people's, um, way of living and, and it's, it's a great improvement. I mean, it's a great asset for the county to have the water system that we have.
You, you talk about an expensive water system heading north.
Well, let's don't even talk about Michigan, huh?
Well, the other piece we should about you, in, you know, it is a balance, like Christina was saying. And the more people we can put on that line, the more we can turn the water over in those tanks, which helps us. We don't have to blow off as much, uh, to keep the water quality up. So the more we can get people using it, the more we turn that tank over and keep fresh water in the lines, keep the chemical levels up, the disinfectant levels up, without having to waste that water, so...
Okay, so...
Next items are the solid waste expansion items.
Okay.
What's that?
Uh, 354, and that's just a very simple one. It's an expansion of $40,000, which is to the true convenience. But, um, as you see, my, my plan is to concentrate this year on Main Hill School Road and the Gray Road. Those are two of the highest, um, based upon numbers, the most used sites. That would be one site on the north side, one site on the south side. I'm looking to improve it. Main Hill School Road, that's a asphalt paved site and it's full of potholes. It's been patched and patched and repatched, and it needs to just get some, some serious work done. It's been cut out and go down and do some, um...
Chalk and Ministry has to miss, ain't it? But we've done some improvement, though.
There has been improvements. I mean, there's actually been, they've had two compactors now. It's still a small site. Um, you know, there may be some cars that are backed up, but all in all, um, it isn't, you know, it's better than it was. None of our sites, um, we, we've increased the amount of gravel that's on the site. The public's doing a better job of keeping that up. But, you know, you travel to other areas, you're traveling around the state, and, you know, concrete pads, something as simple as, as pouring a concrete pad and putting the containers on the concrete pad. I mean, it improves the site. It's just not a, a muddy mess. I mean, we get the rains here, and unfortunately, oftentimes, the location of convenient sites was not the most desirable property. They're low land. That's why the convenience site is there to begin with. So, uh, sometimes it's just an inherent part of the, the property that it's, it's just wet at times.
Yeah, but basically, the money is there to do this?
Yes, sir.
That's almost a no-brainer.
The 30,000. I mean, it's not, it's...
I mean, but it, it, it will...
Fif- fifteen of it is in contingency.
Okay.
But if you approve the rate increase, then you're gonna, we're anticipating that you're gonna bring in $15,000 more than you're gonna expend. So you, of that 30 that she's projecting, you would have 15 of it.
When you, when you increase that by $50, how much money did that bring in? How much is each dollar of that $50?
Wait, a million dollars.
Was it a million? That's what I wanted to know. I mean...
It brought in the difference, which is $1,049,000.
So it was a million dollars. So $1 brings in what, uh, 10,000?
Yeah, they're like 22,000 customers, so a dollar brings in about 22,000 dollars.
You know, if, if you're gonna do this, instead of, uh, and, and make it a true enterprise fund, rather than going back to the general fund and asking us for money, you should just raise it to 142 dollars instead of, from 90 to 142, and, and just get your money to do this work. Do you, do you see what I'm saying? I mean, and therefore, you don't have to go back to the general fund asking for anything, and it, and it becomes a true enterprise fund.
And then they'll, they'll be building every year?
Should build a little bit.
Yeah.
Uh, my guess would if, if, if they, if it's $1 raise 22,000, and you got a $15,000 surplus, you're looking at 44 and 15, which is 59. So you're looking at about a $60,000 surplus to do some of this work you need to do at these sites.
It would give you that amount each year to say, "This year, we're gonna do this. We're gonna spend this much. Next year, we're gonna program in to spend this much. And next year, we're gonna program in to spend this much." So you have that.
And, and that makes it, again, a true enterprise fund, rather than going back to the general fund begging money from it. Which, you know, everybody's gotta pay for, I mean, I gotta pay for my garbage. I mean, I, I live in the city. I get a bill for $15 every month, uh, to pick it up. And, and multiply 15 times 12. That's more, that's more than I'm paying. And, and I'm paying the county fee too, you know?
Anything further?
Nope. I don't have any time.
So tell us what kind of direction you've got on that. I mean, is that a... You want us to...
I mean, that's a suggestion from me to, to do it.
So if you went to 142, you would, you would raise another $44,000 roughly? Plus the 15, it was already in there. So we'd have about 45,000 to spend on site work?
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine, okay. I got you.
How many years of this contract, Brian?
Fifty-nine. That'd be enough to two, two sites.
So it won't be an increase in 10 years, or do they have a billion increase?
It's a five-year fixed, and then there's an adjustment after 15 years.
Well, well, what he suggested, we'll work for five years.
I don't, I didn't know that.
You can earmark that $2, $2 for your expansion project, right? But it will work the first five years since we won't have an increase.
Well, there's always a variable in there, depending upon the tonnage. Cause we fixed the, we fixed the, we fixed the unit cost. the, we fix the, we fix the unit cost, but if the tonnage goes up, the fees are going to go up. If the tonnage goes down, the expenses are going to go down. So, and of course, our goal is to try, is to drive the tonnage down by pulling out, recycling, doing those kinds of things.
I got you.
Do, do we have 11 sites that we're responsible for, or not?
Eleven, twelve.
We rent, don't, we lease...
I, I think I read 11, so...
We lease some, we lease some of them, and we own some of them.
So, we're not responsible.
We own most of them. We only, we lease a few.
Maintain 11 convenience sites, right?
Yes.
How much?
Eleven sites.
And how many do we, we lease?
We lease the one from the town of Aurora, um, and I think there are, gosh, Yatesville, Five Points, we leased from Republic. Ransomville site will be turned over to us at the end, in a few, in a couple of years, so we'll own the Ransomville site. So, I think there's maybe three or four that we lease.
And those people that lease those sites, are they responsible for the upkeep of them and maintenance of the roads and things? We're, we're still responsible for that.
I, I agree with Robert. I'd, I'd like to see us try to add a little bit more for the improvements without having to go to the general fund, at least this first year. I mean, I think we got pretty good a handle on it this first year, so...
So, you're going to 100...
142.
From what, what?
140.
From the 140.
It's $2 more per asshole for the year. I mean, that's not per month, that's per year. It's $2. That's...
Twelve dollars a month.
Twelve into $2, that's not, but about 15, 20, something like that.
Okay. Well, I, I think our policy has pretty much always been that we've never really voted on anything until we got to the, ah...
That's right.
But is there, is there a consensus amongst...
I think we ought to have all the commissioners, ah, here before we do anything like that.
Why don't you just change your recommendation, Brian, in the budget? That's maybe the easiest way to do it. That way, when we vote on the budget we got, you can go back and change it to 142, Kate.
That's a continuation.
Yeah, that is, yeah, we can do that. I mean, if you want us to do that, we'll, we'll revise the numbers based on an additional $2, and we'll show in there a $30,000 repair line item that will stick in the budget as a recurring 30,000 every year, so you can move it from site to site and pick sites, and then we'll let the other roll into contingency. And then that'll be there to be able to build in case you have a bigger site that you need to do, or if something...
Okay, and we, we'll just deal with this when we deal with the, ah, the water enterprise fund. But it'll be on Tuesday.
Okay.
But if, if you look at the increase going from 90 to 142, it's $4.33 a month, the total increase, going from 90 to 142. And we've not had, we've not changed that in eight years, that fee.
We've been losing money for, on it for eight years.
Eight years.
I don't have anything.
All right, we'll adjourn until Monday at 5:30.
Monday?